Okay, it's 6 o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge, and then Commissioner Pat Nigl, please, indication, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious Father in heaven, we pause this day to give thee thanks. Thank you for everything it will as it is, for present health, strength, and energy. Oh, so thankful that we live in such a country that we have these freedoms. We're blessed on the military and those that protect us, the foreign police, keep them safe and keep them from harm. Before I follow, we assemble tonight, and we'll discuss the affairs of the city of Beaver Dam in the most professional way, remembering to make the decisions of what best suited for our citizens and for the future of our community. For be with us and guard us wherever we might be, for keep us from the evil one, in Christ's name. Amen.
Welcome everyone out tonight. First item of business is approval of minutes.
I'd like to motion to approve the minutes.
And that is regular and a special call meeting as well. We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "ah".
Ah.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Make the motion and pay the bills.
Same.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Motion passes. All business, first item is approve the second reading of the 1718 budget amendment.
I'm going to approve the second reading of the 1718 budget amendment.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Motion passes. Next item is approve the second reading of the 1819 budget, which last meeting we did have our first reading.
Are we gonna have time for any discussion on that?
Now is the time.
Well, none's personnel related, so we're gonna be going into closed session anyways.
We can, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item under new business, number one is amend the business license ordinance for the carnival shows, street fairs, and circus. And that's in your packet under the business license. And I'm not sure... Mary, we found out this happened back in the 90s.
Yeah.
Was that...
Yeah.
Okay, most of our business licenses are in the $25 to $45 range, except for one. Carnival shows, street fairs, circus, and it is $200 for each day that they're in operation. And this came about when they had the carnival here in town, back a month or so ago, six weeks ago. And just something, I wish AV was here, because AV talked about it, and I think we did-
He talked to me about it.
Some changes to change it down.
I think it really needs to be done. I'll give you the history on it, because I was here. But that don't change the fact that we did it. I think that we look back at it, it shouldn't have happened, so it wasn't fair. I'd like to see it either pretty close in compensation, or like leave it $100 for the whole week. That'd be a whole lot more economical. But none of our others are that high, so I would try to make it on the high end of the other, like $50.
Well, and that's whatever the pleasure of this commission is. Where this came about, one thing is a problem is, you don't know for sure how long they're going to be there. And you're doing so much a day, it's... You either have to wait and bill them after the fact, hope you get it, or you fill them up front and-
They're actually only supposed to be open Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, right?
No, this has nothing to do with the strawberry festival.
No, this is not strawberry.
This is the other-
This is the one that was in Midtown.
Strawberry festival, for example, because it's a city event.
Right, okay. You're talking about the one-
The one that was at Midtown.
And he was gonna be there for a week or more. Well, Walmart only pays $200 a year, so it's not really fair to charge these people so much a daily.
I think they're the only one that's a daily, isn't it, Mary? That's what I thought.
I'd like to make a... reject the motion on that. I'd like to move that we amend the carnival shows, street fairs, to $100 per event.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Motion passes. Next item is a bid out for Blacktop for 18 and 19.
Yeah, it's gonna be approximately 500 ton. I do not have the street list ready yet, so...
So how much would that put on the street? How many square foot would that cover if I-
Well, it depends on how big-
Any leveling or base or asphalt surface.
Okay. I didn't know, you don't have a street then.
Which actually Hickory Drive, I've got a price on that, he's got a ton, so the tonnage is actually gonna be more.
10 tonne will go 90 feet, nine foot wide.
Is this the same list that you had sent me earlier?
Two inches deep.
Okay, that's what I thought.
This would be the biggest list for a 10 tonne.
Okay. I do want to talk to you about a couple of areas.
Don't we usually do them an inch though on resurface?
Yeah, on resurface, well, actually, sometimes on resurface, you only go a half inch.
Oh, okay.
Depending on what you're doing. It depends, you know, if you're filling it-
Some of them up there at Hickory, they never had a top coat on.
Well, that's... Hickory's a unique situation. We wouldn't need to entertain a motion to allow to advertise for bids.
We said advertise for bids for Blacktop.
I'll get Mary to tell you in just a minute when that-
That amount of tons of lot, that would go a long way.
Yeah, Hickory Drive is...
Yeah.
Can we have a motion and second any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same.
Hickory Drive is 616 tonne of base, 439 tonne of asphalt or of surface. So it's gonna be over 1,000 ton right there, just on that one street.
It's a pretty long street.
Are they completely starting from scratch on it?
It didn't have much.
Wouldn't that the person... Did we accept it as being... See, that's our mistake, we shouldn't have done that.
I agree.
Is that not enough? And I'm not saying, yeah, it's supposed to be certain base, certain...
Yeah, but we can't very well go backwards on something that's done before our time, but we just move forward.
Yeah, and you know me, that's the sore subject, because asphalt's my stuff.
Okay, next item is to approve the building construction invoice for June.
Yeah, I think you have that.
Yeah, it's probably in my mailbox, so no, I don't have it with me. Mary's got a copy, I'm good she'll have it covered.
Just an extra for the last payment.
Actually, this is from June, April 15th, April 16th, probably, isn't it?
Yes, this is $83,080. How much does that leave on the contract, Mary?
Uh, how much was the contract for, do you remember?
Four.
After this payment here, it'll be $341,000.
Okay, so it's gonna be about $80,000, $80,000 to $90,000 more, okay. Do we need a motion to pay this?
Some need.
Second. We have a motion and second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Next item is to review the insurance. And we're going... The low bid, we did not get to go to market like we planned on it because of a multitude of things came up, but we did get a discount from KLC to the tune, it was about $4,000. Yeah, this is something, this is step two of that. There's about a $4,000 decrease over last year's premiums, to stay with Kentucky League of Cities. What this is, is a rate stabilization agreement that they have through KLC, that if we're willing to sign off on it, they guarantee that the premiums next year will not increase by more than 3%, provided we stay below 65% property... of 65% loss ratio. Which has not been a problem for us. I guess our first would need to go ahead and accept the KLC insurance. And then we can come back and accept this separately if we like.
Don't move.
We have a motion and second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Motion passes. The stabilization is something that if we were to change, actually, we would be in for next year, but we guarantee that we'd go up no more than 3%, so there'd still be next year's premiums being less of what they were last year if we decide to do this, or we can always not do it and stay with the market, fluctuation of the market.
We've been with them for quite a few years, so...
Well, they're very good to us.
Yeah.
For a lot of things, so... So we need to entertain that in the form of a motion to do this.
So will. Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion and second any further discussion.
Now, the last time we took insurance bids, it was immense. It's so hard to compare apples and apples, though.
Well, and that's what we ran into this year, and so many people, like Sherre Partners is our broker, but they don't keep this information, it's with KLC. So they very well can't go to KLC and get it to go to travelers or whoever, to go to a competitor, so... I think they tried to get some information together for some of the other carriers, but it was a whole lot to it. And even with this, there may be some numbers we may look at. Did you see some of the numbers they were insuring some of these buildings for? We may, before we finalize it, then we may check on some of that. Kind of like Oldham Park, some of them were pretty high, high dollar amounts, so... Okay, there's your comments, Mr. Harrison Taylor, we'll start with you first.
Yeah, I was wondering if the strawberry fest fund could cover the electric and water from running there or a portion of it, since we used all that fire station.
Get me a bill and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
We're still paying out, so...
All right, something like that.
If you could get it to me, maybe leave it in my mailbox something this week would help, just because I'd-
I don't ever see them, so I have to ask them for it.
Okay, just so we're... I'm gonna try to get everything done before the end of June.
Water, we can actually know until-
It won't rain either, so it's on Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a few days before we know when that happens. The same with electric too.
Mr. Ratchett, Mr. Ratchett. Tommy?
I have an issue. I live at the Bearden Housing Authority, and a few months ago, they asked me to move to a two-story apartment because one of my... I lived in a one-story handicap accessible apartment, and one of the neighbors had a stroke, and they asked me if she could have my apartment. So they gave me a day's notice, and I moved. Just the two of us, we moved all of our furniture to a two-story apartment. Since then, myself and all three of my kids have gotten sick. We all have pneumonia. And I have doctor, I have proof from the doctor that it's because there's mold in the apartment. When I first moved in, I complained to the building managers that the floor was always wet. They said that the air conditioner must not be working right. Now, before I go into that, my stepdad is a... does HVAC, but he's an Afghanist now, so he can't come and fix it. But the floor was always wet, and then my couch started getting damp. You'd sit down, your clothes would get wet. And the rug was always damp, the counters were, you know, all damp. Well, the kids started getting sick, nose started running, headaches, crying all the time. I thought it was just allergies, so I put them on medicine. And then two weeks ago, I was re-rending furniture, and I went to move my rug, and there was light mold growing over it because it's always wet. And so I told the building managers about it. I rushed to the emergency room, because I have a five-year-old, a two-year-old, and a one-year-old. My one-year-old had gotten this cough, and every time he breathed, his chest would run. So I rushed him to the emergency room, I saw an X-ray showing, and they said that all three of them had pneumonia, and that I would call him, have two. I asked the building managers for a dehumidifier, and they denied me one until yesterday. They said that it wasn't their job to get me one, that I had to buy them home. They finally got me one yesterday. This is, I've lived there for two, three months, and I went up until, what, last week, and I didn't have an oven or stove. That's, you know, that's just another problem, but the... I've asked them several times if I could just move to another apartment. There are three vacant apartments, and they won't listen to me. They won't. They keep telling me, because I have, I switched my water over to the new apartment, but I haven't switched my electric and my gas yet, because I told them there was an issue, and I wanted to move to another apartment, and I didn't want to pay another fine to have my utilities switched again if I should move. Well, they're saying they're going to evict me. They're saying that they're going to evict me on Friday.
She put a video on Facebook showing the moisture and everything in her apartment, and the next day, they came and gave her eviction notice. They were mad that I posted on it. I even went to the office to tell them how bad they were sick and everything, and how bad the moisture was in the apartment.
She was upstairs mad.
And they're blaming it on her, because the windows leak, which she doesn't do. It's a two-story apartment.
It's one of the townhouses.
Okay, so it's got enough...
Yeah.
Is something from the upstairs running down into the...
Well, they're talking about taking her bathroom wall out now because of something.
They said, they said that the wall was squishy, like it was, like it was wet, but they, they won't do anything about it.
Drywall will bubble if you just-
Now, there's an air return downstairs with the air conditioner, but I didn't realize that there was one upstairs, because it's above, you know, it's up high, it's above your head. So I didn't realize that it was up there. They do monthly inspections to make sure we're keeping our apartments clean, and they're supposed to, they're supposed to switch-
They didn't change the filters again this past month. Before, they went three months without doing it. Every apartment there, that's what it looked like. I took mine out months ago and threw it away.
And I just, I just realized that there was one upstairs, and this is what it looked like, it's... I mean, I, today, just today, they came and they asked me if I had switched my utilities yet. And I said, "No, can I please move to another apartment?" I said, "Tell them that I went to the doctor last week, and the doctor told us that we're not getting better." My kids have been on antibiotics for two weeks, they're not getting better, they're getting worse. And he started cussing me. He told me that he... He's saying that I'm leaving the windows open while the air's running. Okay, well, even if I was doing that, it wouldn't cause as much moisture that it's causing. My stepdad's an HVAC guy. I knew this.
I live in one of the apartments as well, my kids are in and out, my front and back door's open all the time, air going. There's no moisture whatsoever.
There's something wrong with my apartment.
Are you in one of the townhouses too?
She's five years old for me. And I complained, today they came, and they was like, "Have you switched your utilities?" And I said, "No, can I please move to another apartment?", and then I'll switch my utilities. And he, he said, "No, please, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it", and I said, "Well, we've already crossed that bridge, my kids all have pneumonia, and they're getting worse and not getting better." If they're not better by Friday, the doctors is admitting them to the hospital. And I'll have three kids, five, two, one-
She's got pneumonia as well. She lost 14 pounds in the first month of moving there. All of them throwing up, waking up throwing up, thinking that they had a stomach virus, and come to find it's from the mold in that apartment. The people who lived there previously had complained, we found this out, you know, afterwards, that they complained to them as well about something wrong in the apartment, and they won't do anything about it. Not only did they just give her a day's notice, she lost her job because of it. So this switching utilities isn't as easy as what they seem to think it is. She's broke.
I have no money. If I had money, guys, I wouldn't live for the housing authority. There's a reason I live there.
They already made her pay over $900-
When I lived in the West Side.
-for they to convict her, because they refused to switch it from where she had a job to zero income. They continually make her pay that, and she couldn't do it for months.
They're, you know, it's income-based, they're supposed to change it in the system once your income is, you know, changed. Once I lost the job, I went down there and I told them, and she just kept on, "Well, just come back down tomorrow, and I'll have paperwork. Come back down tomorrow, I'll have paperwork." And this went on for months, and then finally I got an eviction notice that I owed almost $900. And I went down there and I was like, "Look, you know I don't have a job, you know, this, I don't know what you want me to do", and she was like, "Well, we can't change it in the system." So I was babysitting kids, cleaning people's houses, doing whatever I could, just great to save money.
But they changed mine. Yeah, no problem.
They changed everybody else's, no problem, but they wouldn't change my income in the system. So I ended up paying, just crouching for money so that my kids could have a place to stay, and-
They still haven't changed her rent.
They still, today-
Which it isn't a lot, okay? Her rent's, you know, around $60 a month, but she has no money. Mine stays off of $500 a month, and minus half of what she's supposed to be paying.
Okay, I'm with... What's your name?
Heather. My name's Whitney Middlestrawson.
And you're?
Heather Kleiner.
Heather, I'm sorry.
Kleiner.
And Whitney, what was the last name again?
Middlestrawson.
Middlestrawson. That was a new one on me, I haven't heard that one before.
I ended up, last week, my mom had to pay for me to stay at a hotel for two days, because I went to the doctor, and he said if we didn't get out of the apartment, we're just gonna have to move into the hospital. We stayed at Beaver Dam Inn for two nights, and the day that I got there, I was really dizzy, I was getting out of breath, just, you know, picking up my kids, just doing simple stuff that I do all the time. And with this staying though for two days, I felt, I felt 100% better, but as soon as we came back, and y'all heard me, I've been coughing, getting lightheaded again, and instead of helping me or doing anything about it, I'm getting cussed, and-
No, they're awful. They really are.
You go down there, and, you know, I went down there to talk to them about, you know, I'd lost my job, and I told, you know, told them about it. They're in there, I'm dead serious, I'm not just trying to throw them under the bus, I'm telling you, they're in there so hungover that they're falling asleep, or, I don't know if she was actually drunk. She couldn't win laughing. She was laughing at nothing, and I was just like-
Who's she?
Ciara Blacklock, Ciara Blacklock, and then Matthew, Matthew Rivers.
Are these, you've talked to the maintenance people about this? Have you gone to the actual board meetings that run the place?
Well, I don't know how to get to the board without going through Matt Ciara. We called, I called the number, and they said speak to the mayor. They said I needed to talk to him. They told me that I had to, that you were over the board, and that I had to speak to you. I called up here, and they said I had to speak to you.
We called the health department, we called everyone we could think of to call to try to get help.
I'm no fun calling Matt. We don't have any, the city really has no authority over the housing authority.
Ask what we do.
I mean-
Now, you need to talk to the housing authority board.
I don't know how they, they don't go in with Matt Ciara. I mean, they just-
Well, they think you want me to do that, and then they go down to the bar and do that.
She's driving a company vehicle, you know, a special vehicle.
If we do that, we have no home, you know? They get to keep their jobs and treat us like dirt. I mean, I, look, guys, I understand, but there are a lot of people who take advantage of the system. But I live there because I have nowhere else to go. My family doesn't live here, I have no family here. My family lives in Bowling Green, in Scottsville, that area. I moved up here to be with my ex, and now we have kids. And, I mean, this is just, this is just the situation that I'm living in right now, until I can better, until I can better it. But my kids are always sick, I can't put them in daycare, no daycare will keep them if they're sick. I can't keep a job, I can't, my car's, you know, about to fall apart, I don't know what else to do. And right now, I'm just, my kids are about to get put in the hospital with pneumonia.
Are there other townhouse units available?
Yes, yes. We've asked repeatedly. I've been down there talking to them myself. The apartment, the day I asked, because the day we had a stroke, they asked me to move. She never even took the apartment. She, that, my old apartment is still vacant.
Still empty.
It's still empty. We did it for nothing. She lost her job for nothing.
What's your apartment number?
Not right now, it's four of six.
My daughter's on the housing authority, will be down there tomorrow. Does that make that help at least?
Yes.
We'll see what's going on.
Because, well, I mean, because they're saying that they're gonna have me on Friday if I don't switch, if I don't switch-
Yeah, we can-
I don't want to switch with the utilities, and we have to do it right.
I understand that, she had paid twice for the supercut fee.
Right, I don't want to have to do it.
I understand that.
I asked what the deal is, if they got other original units, what's-
That's the thing, and like I said, my daughter is on the housing board authority, housing authority board, and I'll go down there with her tomorrow morning, we'll be down there tomorrow.
My mom is chairman of the board, and she's been out this past week. My uncle was sick, and then he passed away.
The way that Matt Ciara, I think the board is wanting me out.
Show us the Facebook post.
Oh, well, then, when I, when I found the mold, I wrote Ciara on Facebook, and I told her, I was like, "I need you and Matt at my apartment in the morning." I wanted to show them mold. I wanted to show them, you know, it was all over my carpet, and it was growing, and the top, the floors in the apartment is kind of like what you'd see in like a school or a hospital, and there was mold growing out of the center, you know, the cracks at the top. And I wrote her, and I was just like, "I need you and Matt at my apartment in the morning." And she called me, and she said something wrong, and I said, "Yeah, I said, I said I found mold, and I think that's what's wrong with my kids, they've been sick for months." And then it was a couple days later, she made a post on Facebook about how it was, it's... She said, "I am so tired of people keeping me miserable at home with stuff from work. You wouldn't like it if you worked all the time, and when you finally got to go home with your little girl, people blow your phone up. You're not paying my phone bill, I don't get paid for nights or weekends there. I have at least six people who do this every day, and I had to, I had to put a stop to it for my own sanity. I feel like I don't ever have time off. If you have questions or concerns about anything to do with the housing authority, please don't private message me anymore. And if we can't contact our building manager, then who do we talk to? And I can't get to the board without going through them."
Like, I went down there the day before yesterday, no, it was Friday, I believe. Tell them my front door is falling off, the whole frame, the wood around the screen door is coming off. It's held on by one nail up there, and it could come off anytime. It's a heavy door for these little kids. You know cadence and collagen. Okay, so I went down there, they called David, the maintenance man, while I was there. No one has shown up still. And I said something about my fiance fixing it, and they refused. He's not to touch it, because if he tears up, then I have to pay for the, which makes sense, but I'm scared it's gonna fall off and hit one of the children. And it's not a hard thing to fix, it's easy.
And then, this is the thing, there's another lady that lives there, and her son is disabled, and I think he's almost blind. He's a toddler, and they have refused to help her. She lives in a handicap apartment, and they, or no, they, she asked for a handicap apartment. Well, my old apartment is handicap accessible, and they refused, that she wasn't allowed to live there. They said that, she said that her, what was it, her light fixture caught on fire in her living room, and it caught on fire, and nobody, and they came up and refused to help her fix it.
Their walls are covered in soot.
They're all coughing and hacking, and they're all sick because of it.
And they're denying that it ever happened, saying that she's a liar.
When I, when I complained to them that my oven wasn't working, the maintenance guy came up there, and he went back down to Matt Ciara's home that I was hot, that it was working fine. It wasn't working, it wouldn't have gone on. It wouldn't have gone on.
They finally got her a new one, what, last week, they got me a new one.
But I've went two months without a working oven or stove. I couldn't, you know, cooking my kids food in the microwave. I mean, and they telling me, you know, that I'm hot, that I'm, I must be on drugs because it works fine. If this is, I'm sorry, it's a lot to throw at you. But I'm, I'm fed up with it, and I don't know what else to do. It's my job to take care of my kids and keep them healthy and safe, and I can't do that if the people who were supposed to help me won't do it. Actually, thank you so much. I don't know how this works.
Oh, you're welcome to go, you're welcome to go or stay, either way. Mike?
I expect her to get moved over there maybe in a couple weeks, maintenance man, Paul. About another month, the probation, doing an excellent job. Glad to have him. Chris is going to school this week. I've got school end of the week, end of the month. Everybody go right on along, just fight it us, if you all can save it, but hopefully that'll be over.
Keith?
Been an interesting day, but other than the happening downtown, Regional Sura meets the third Tuesday of this month. I think our sewer discount is scheduled to run out this month or next, so I'll probably go to meet and see if we'll get it for another six months. And that's really all that's going on, I guess.
I have nothing.
Now, I've already talked to, you know, that's something I want at cemetery, it's not in good shape.
Kevin?
Got one thing, I just want to talk in closed session, but that's it, I'm good.
Larry?
No, not after closed session.
AV? I guess we can go to closed session.
Make the motion. Make the motion to go back into open session.
Second, did you give my second, Matt? Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we're back from closed session. Of course, no business was conducted, then we'll see. I think the last item on the agenda is the budget. 2018, 2019, second reading.
Second reading.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a "ah". Post same. Motion passes. Anybody have anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I should hear something at the end. Two boys went to the water tank, I should hear that on their test.
Oh, okay.